First, I must make a webcasting notice and remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council's website. And the video of the meeting will be published after the meeting. I don't know if that means it's going to be available on YouTube or not. Firstly, I'd like to introduce the officers from Gaddlingborough Council who will be providing support during this meeting. They are Mike Avery, the Assistant Director, Planning and Regeneration; Kevin Cartridge and Nigel Bryan, Principal Planning Officers; Sarah Cregan, Solicitor from our Legal Department; and Kate Goodall, Democratic Services Officer and Clerk to the Committee.
Hello.
A few preliminary notices. All members of the Committee, please ensure that their microphones are switched off or muted, as it now is, when they are not required to speak, and switched on or unmuted when they are called on to speak, and that they speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones. And we'll all counsellors try and limit their contributions to three minutes or less in order that everyone gets a fair chance to air their views. Now, obviously, this is the first time we've had a meeting of this nature, and there are going to be some changes to the normal procedure. Under apologies for absence and substitutions, the Clerk of the Committee, which is Kate Goodall, will introduce all councillors who have registered their attendance, as well as apologies and substitutions. At that point in the agenda, when I have normally asked for a proposer and a second from the floor to avoid confusion, I will propose each item as Chair, and councillor Paul Wilkinson will second as Vice-Chair. This in no way an indication of support or opposition, but any proposal or application by either of us is merely a means of expediting the proceedings. When it comes to that point in the agenda, when I would normally open up the meeting for contributions from the floor, instead, the Clerk of the Committee will ask councillors in alphabetical order to make their contributions or questions. Please observe the three-minute limit. Similarly, when it comes to the vote at the end of the item, that will be conducted alphabetically as well. As we obviously have no big screen to show site plans, elevations, et cetera, councillors have been issued with a colour supplement to the main agenda papers to refer to during the course of the meeting. And I hope you have all received and read your financial viability appraisals for item 10 on the agenda. Finally, there will be a short comfort break after item six on the agenda for approximately five minutes. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so I will confirm attendance of councillors present today. Councillor Truscott?
Uh huh.
Councillor Wilkinson? Could you put your speaker on, please?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Barnes?
Good afternoon.
Councillor Barnfather?
Present.
Councillor Creamer?
Present.
Councillor David Ellis?
Present.
Councillor Rachel Ellis? Councillor Rachel Ellis? Sorry, can't hear. I can see Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Elwood?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Hope?
Present.
Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Lawrence?
Can you unmute, please, Councillor Lawrence?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence, we can't see your face at the moment. Could we just, could you just adjust your screen for me? Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor McCrossan?
Yes, present.
Councillor Paling?
Present.
Councillor Parr? Councillor Parr absent.
He hasn't joined the meeting, Kate.
No. Councillor Squoggie?
Present.
Councillor Smith?
Hasn't joined the meeting.
Councillor Wheeler?
Hello.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we've received apologies from Councillor Michael Adams. Substitute was councillor Smith, but he's not present at the meeting. Also from councillor Rosa Cunnealy and councillor Miller, substituted by councillor McCrossan and councillor Creamer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That was item one on the agenda. Item two is the proposal to approve. As a correct record, the minutes of the meeting is held on the 12th of February 2020, which you'll find on pages five to nine. If anybody does not approve, will they still please speak up? Otherwise, I will assume that it is agreed as a correct record. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Planning Committee Protocol, which you'll find between pages 11 and 13 on the agenda, which I'm sure you've all read. Item three is declarations of interest. And I will declare a collective non-peculiary interest in agenda items five and nine, as Gaddlingborough Council has ownership interest on both these items. Right. The main substantive item on the agenda is item four.
Chair, so I'm trying to indicate that I've got to, I've got to declare an interest in four and five of predetermination. I've been involved in opposing it, so item four and five, predetermination.
Okay, that means you can't take part in the debate or can't take, and can't take tart in the vote.
Correct.
Okay, well, thanks very much for announcing that. Let's make sure everything is honest and above board. So, we move to the Application 2019/0152, land north of Teal Close. And we do have a speaker here, who is the applicant, Mr Chris Gallot from Persimmon Homes. So, Mr Gallot, are you with us?
Hi Chair, thank you very much.
If you could limit yourself to the usual three minutes, please, to avoid me having to interrupt you.
I am timing, Chair.
Thank you very much, Kate.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Dear Members of the Committee, my name is Chris Gallot. I'm a charter town planner, directly employed by Persimmon Homes, who are the applicant for the application before you. Persimmon Homes is the nation's leading house builder, building over 15,000 to 16,000 homes a year. The application represents phase two of our successful Teal Close development. It is for a total of 353 new houses, and is a continuation from our phase one. Phase one commenced in 2018. A significant amount of enabling and infrastructure works went underway to facilitate this, which is ensuring quick delivery with our phase two, assuming we get approval. And the design themes of phase two are a continuation of those approved under phase one. It includes an improved and extended range of high-quality new homes, matching different affordability brackets. Wide expanses of the landscaping is proposed, including trees, hedgerows and well-equipped area of play. And we've worked closely with the officers to ensure the layout is functional, sympathetic, while ensuring various densities across the site and accommodating off-street parking for all properties. A bus route has now been designed into the layout, ensuring that there is further choice of sustainable travel in the future. A site-wide drainage strategy has already been approved, and this phase continues the delivery of that with extensive and significant swales, ensuring sustainability and longevity. This is, this will treat the water, discharging into the dike, but also provide amenity benefits for all the residents that are moving on the site and anybody who visits the site. With regards to the minimal objections raised in the committee report, the scheme already has outlined planning, so the matters of odour and highways were resolved previously, the matters before you, then really only the layout and the design of the houses. But as you know, there are a lot of other issues that are brought forward under the outline planning, usually tied with the section 106, which we are delivering. Concerning one of those elements is the ecological park, which we've been in dialogue with council officers regarding the delivery of this 10 hectare site. And I confirm heads of terms for this committee circulated, cementate their role of environmental sustainability seriously. Therefore, the delay moving this forward is more unfortunate. However, we are collaborating to ensure it is done correctly by diversity and ecological sustainability at the forefront of decision-making. I can also update that the, now obviously the planning permission for the school, the works are in progress and construction will start imminently. Despite the ongoing and unusual circumstances we find ourselves in, I mean, are committed to delivering high-quality houses for the local community on this site. And I therefore request that you support your officers' recommendation for approval. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Gallot. What's on? Right, I would now ask Mike Avery. Is Mike Avery with us?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
To give us some more information about this application on page 16, reserve matters application. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Chairman. The application seeks approval of reserve matters for 353 dwellings, not 354, as an amended plan was received following the registration of the application, which resulted in the omission of a two-bedroom apartment. The description of the proposal is therefore updated, as is the schedule of accommodation provided at paragraph 3.2 of the report, and the overall figures provided at paragraph 7.3. The plans listed in condition one are, however, correct. Further to the publication of the report, two representations have been received from members of the public, which raise the following summarised issues. The ecology assessment submitted with the application for outline planning permission are out of date, as habitats in the area have changed since the survey work has been undertaken. The ecological works plan and ecology management plan have not been approved, and there is no ecology committee, as required by the section 106 agreement. No action has been taken by Gaddlingborough Council to enforce the non-compliance of the agreement. Since an initial meeting of the Ecology Committee, organised by Gaddlingborough Council in July 2019, there has been no follow-up or attempt to form a committee. The development will have a significant impact upon the adjacent Netherfield Lagoon Local Nature Reserve site, and, given the current breaches of the section 106 agreement, the current application should be rejected or suspended pending compliance with the section 106 agreement. In response to these comments, I provide the following verbal update. The extent outline planning permission and the section 106 agreement cannot be revisited unless revised proposals are advanced by the developer. While there may have been ecological changes on parts of the site, the developer is still required to meet their obligations under the Wildlife and Countryside Act 1981. Officers have been working actively with Persimmon Homes to set up an ecology committee, provide a forum for the local community to discuss the management of the proposed ecology park. The responsibility for establishing the committee lies with Persimmon Homes, but officers have ensured consultation takes place with members of the group, which includes the Gaddling Conservation Trust. The first informal face-to-face meeting of the Ecology Committee was held in July 2019, and officers have played an active role in drafting the heads of terms and conditions of the group, which are now being finalised. Officers expect the next meeting of the Ecology Committee to take place next month, and are committed to working with all members of the group and the local community to further progress plans for the ecology park and the ecology management plan. Enforcement of the agreement would not, therefore, be expedient at this time. It should be noted that while there's a technical breach of the section 106 agreement, this does not preclude the local planning authority from determining this application for approval of reserve matters, which is made pursuant to an extent outline planning permission. So, the principle of residential development and access arrangements have been established through the grant of the outline permission. This application has been made pursuant to the extent outline permission, and seeks approval of reserve matters relating to appearance, layout and landscaping. The development is a continuation of the first 199 units approved in phase one, and the layout and landscaping proposals are in full conformity with the approved master plan. The proposals have been advanced by the same house builder, and the scale and appearance of the dwellings are in keeping with those currently under construction. There are, however, some new house types, including an apartment block, to add further interest to the new street scenes. Building heights varied in the development, particularly at key locations, to provide focal points and end stops to street views and vistas. The application is considered to be in full conformity with the extent outline permission and the relevant development plan policies. I therefore recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mike. So, there we have it, on page 16 of your agenda papers, a reserve matters application for the erection of 353 dwellings, et cetera, et cetera. So, I will officially move that as Chair of the Committee. And councillor Wilkinson?
Yeah, I'll second that formally, reserve the right to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. And Kate, would you like to take over and all the councillors to speak in order?
Yes, I will. Okay, so councillor Barnes?
Move the recommendation, support it all down the line. I think it's a good development and it's picking base, and it will be improved when the goal is done as well, so all in support of it.
Councillor Barnfather?
Yes, thank you, Kate. Thank you, Mr Avery, for the clarification in relation to the apology. I think we've probably had all been contacted by Mr Glover and other residents, expressing concerns about a failure to implement the section 106 agreement. So, your explanation was helpful, as that would have been my question. And I'm happy in light of that response to support the application.
Okay, councillor David Ellis?
Thank you, Chair. I support the application. I think, as Mr Avery said, it is in compliance with the outline planning permission, and it looks like a good, a good next phase. I am worried, though, about the ecological park. I mean, there's very clearly an opportunity here for synergy between the ecological park and the lagoons, and that seems to be missed. I've got the copy of the section 106 agreement, which clearly says, prior to the first occupation of the development, the owner will form the Ecology Committee. And we've heard from both the, both the spokesman for Persimmon and Mr Avery, that that hasn't been, hasn't been achieved. So, although the representative of Persimmon said that delay is unfortunate, it very clearly is a breach of the section 106 agreement. So, I'd like to ask Mr Avery, what assurances do we have that the Ecology Committee will be up and running in very short order, so that things can move on and we can take the advantages of the synergies that there are in the area? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, councillor Ellis. As detailed in my presentation, there has been significant progress, which has been made in terms of forming that committee. So, there was an initial meeting last year. You know, the progress did stall at that point. However, we now have draft heads of terms circulated for that committee, and we're very much committed to having the first meeting of that committee next month. That is going to be a priority now for officers. Persimmon Homes, I understand, are absolutely on board with this. So, we need to get the agreement completed, and we need to ensure that that committee does indeed meet next month, because that is the expectation of key stakeholders, including the Gaddling Conservation Trust.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Thank you. I've appreciated the responses to previous comments from colleague councillors. I would like to add my voice in saying I have some concerns about the formation and pursuit of the Ecology Committee, but with the reassurances that we've been offered, I think we can approve this whilst monitoring that the 106 agreement is in fact put into effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Elwood?
Thank you, yes. I haven't really got anything else to add, that other members of the committee have already said, regard to the ecology park. So, in that regard, I'm happy to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Hope?
There we go. Yeah, well, I too have the same problem. I don't, I don't understand why this committee wasn't set up, but at the moment, it actually isn't set up, is it? It's pending. And even then, it's got to decide what it's actually going to do and how it's going to work with Persimmon Homes. I'm really genuinely quite concerned that when it is set up, they have no teeth, and therefore it becomes almost irrelevant anyway. Because clearly, despite what officers and person have said, nobody's really pushed it until now, because it is becoming a problem. And, you know, I wondered if we couldn't put in some sort of, or I don't know, proviso, that nothing moves forward until that committee and its heads of term are set up and it's running. Because that way, we at least will know that we are pressing those people who, to date, have not moved forward on that, to move forward if they want to get their development off the ground. We can't have people just ignoring the recommendations of the Planning Committee. Anyway, that's my view. I'm not quite sure what condition you could put in. Maybe the officer could help.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, councillor Hope. Unfortunately, we couldn't put any further conditions on this approval of reserve matters to require compliance with the section 106 agreement. That will be a separate matter. That would have to be progressed separately. So, this application for approval of reserve matters needs to be considered on the basis of its merits, and if there was continued non-compliance with the section 106 agreement, the assurance that I can give to the planning committee is that we could bring a separate report to the planning committee, you know, seeking to take enforcement action following relevant legal advice. So, officers are committed to ensuring that this non-compliance with section 106 agreement is fully resolved.
Can I ask you then one further question? At what point in the future would you consider that you haven't had compliance? Would we be waiting six months? Would we be waiting two months? Would we expect it to be in place, you know, within three months? But what sort of time scale are you going to give it before you say it hasn't been complied with?
Well, we're committed to working with Persimmon Homes to ensure that this matter is resolved by the end of next month. So, in terms of the time scale, if it isn't fully resolved, August.
Okay, Ella, thank you very much.
Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Lawrence?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I have the same concerns that have been put forward earlier. It does seem to me that it's taken rather too long for this Ecology Committee to be set up. It's very disappointing when this sort of thing happens. I mean, especially not just in terms of the ecology park, but its proximity to the Netherfield Lagoons. And I would hope that we could get informed on a more regular basis of what progress is being made to alleviate the concerns of the Gaddling Conservation Trust, which is, you know, a well-respected organisation in the borough.
Councillor Paling?
Thank you. Like almost everyone who's spoken, I had the concerns, but having heard everything that Mike's got to say, I think I am quite happy to approve the application. I would make the comment, perhaps, that it's a shame that we can't hear again from Persimmon Homes, because perhaps, having heard all of our comments, they too would like to get on with the committee, so that we aren't having any future concerns about the development. Thank you.
Councillor Squoggie?
I've not really got anything extra to add. Obviously, the concerns that fellow councillors have raised is exactly what I've raised as well. So, it would be rather silly to say the same things really.
Okay. Councillor Wheeler?
Hello, hi, yeah. Many of the concerns I've had already been raised, I'm not going to go over this again, but I'm quite happy to support the application, and listened to what Mike Avery said today. So, on those grounds, I'm happy to support the recommendations. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Chair. I wasn't on the committee when outline permission was given in 2013, I believe, wasn't it? And I think I've expressed reservations before when we dealt with reserve matters on previous aspects of the scheme. So, I'm not overall thrilled with the developments as a whole, but we are where we are. And, you know, outline permission is there, and the reserved matters in front of us are in accordance with that outline permission. So, I don't have a problem with that. I do, however, share the grave concerns that others have expressed in terms of the ecology park, but I welcome Mike Avery's reassurances, particularly in respect of enforcement, if we don't see serious progress soon. And therefore, I'm minded to approve the application as it is.
Councillor McCrossan?
Yeah, I fully support the application. I do also support the other councillors who've expressed concerns, and I just think there needs to be due diligence maintained throughout the process. But yeah, I support the application fully.
Councillor Truscott?
Okay, yes, obviously, I agree with all the reservations that other people have made, but as far as the application itself is concerned, the reserve matters application, I actually paid a site visit on Sunday to the, to the site, with its rather pretentious name of Rivendell. I hope they've asked JRR for permission to use the name. And I looked around the phase one to the south of Magenta Way, and I was very impressed. I think they've done a great job of building, they've got attractive houses, nearly all of them are full, so they're obviously very popular. And, you know, I think it's really good that, you know, we should give them permission for this reserve matters once a day, so they can get on with building out of phase two.
No, John.
Hello?
No, I'm just supporting you, John, so, all right.
All right. And so, yes, I almost certainly vote in favour of approving this application. Okay?
Okay, Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we go to the vote. Kate, would you like to take it away?
I will. Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Squoggie.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
And Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you. That was carried.
Okay, thanks very much indeed. Right, we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is application number 220/0190, which is land at Teal Close. And this is a modification of Section 106 agreement. And Mike, would you like to explain this in more detail?
Yes, thank you, Councillor Truscott. The modifications required so that the proposed registered provider of affordable housing, which in this particular case is Gedlin Homes, is able to finance eight of the approved affordable housing units. The overall level and mix of affordable housing within the development will be unchanged. It would fully accord with the outline planning permission. The proposal has been referred to the planning committee because there's currently no delegations in place for officers to amend Section 106 agreements once they've been completed. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So you have your application on page 28. And I will move it formally as Chair.
Formally seconded.
Thank you very much. I'll open the debate now to the floor. Kate, if you'd like to run through the alphabetical list, please.
Councillor Barnes.
Just support the application. I've got another comment to make. Thank you.
Councillor Barnfather.
No comments to make. Thank you.
Councillor David Ellis.
No comments. Thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
No comments. Thank you.
Councillor Elwood.
Again, no comment. Thank you.
Councillor Hope.
Sorry, I wasn't switched on. No comment.
Councillor Lawrence.
No comment.
Councillor Paling.
No comment.
Councillor Squoggie.
No comment. Thank you.
Councillor Wheeler.
No comments to make. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
No comment.
And Councillor McCrossan.
Yes, no comment. Thank you.
Councillor Truscott.
I've got nothing further to say on this.
Okay.
Okay, so now can we go to the vote, please?
Councillor Barnes.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Squoggie.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Councillor McCrossan.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you. That was carried.
Kate, there's also Councillor Creamer.
Councillor Creamer declared an interest in this item.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you.
That was carried, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now can we move on to item six on the agenda, application 2019/0696, which you'll find on page 34 of your agenda papers, which is Section 73 to remove Condition Two of planning. Mike, would you like to explain what this is all about?
Yes, thank you, Councillor Truscott. The deletion of this condition will permit the construction and occupation of a total of 506 dwellings located within Phase 1A and 1B of the developments ahead of the completion of the Gedlin Access Road, construction of which began on the 6th of January this year. The remaining balance of the 1,050 dwellings will be constructed as part of Phase Two, following the consideration of the relevant reserve matters approvals being obtained. But that approval would need to be brought to this committee. So there's currently no permission in place for the balance of the dwellings. At the time of considering the outline planning permission for the Chase Farm development, there was a degree of uncertainty in relation to the delivery of the Gedlin Access Road. The land required for the Gedlin Access Road was indifferent ownerships and full funding had not been secured. So it was by no means certain that the development of the road would actually go ahead. These issues have now been fully resolved. And as I said earlier, the construction works commenced on the 6th of January. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, planned work on the GAR has progressed and the road is still due to be completed on schedule. I spoke to the project manager earlier on this morning at the acting on behalf of the County Council and he confirmed, you know, this morning that the project is still on track. So it's still scheduled for completion, possibly in the autumn of 2021. The Highways Authority has assessed the removal of the cap from a highway safety and congestion perspective and have raised no objection to the removal of the cap, even if traffic levels rise beyond pre-COVID-19 levels prior to the completion of the Gedlin Access Road due to the construction of further dwellings on the site. I therefore recommend that Condition Two is removed in accordance with the officer report. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So there we have the proposal on page 34, Section 73, application to remove Condition Two, et cetera, et cetera. I will move that formally as Chair.
Formally seconded. Preseththeright speak.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay. Councillor Barnes.
No further comments. Support the application.
Councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you. The condition was originally put in, of course, because the Gedlin Access Road may never have got off the ground. The funding may have not ultimately transpired or for whatever other reason it didn't happen. I think we're all satisfied that it is such an advanced stage at this moment in time that that is not going to be the case. And it seems therefore quite appropriate that the planning permissions should be in progress to be able to advance the additional residential dwellings as and when that time arrives. So I'm happy to support the application.
Councillor David Ellis.
Thank you, Chair. On the County Council's website, there's an aerial view flagged over the site, which is actually quite dizzying. But I think it's fairly clear that lifting the cap is a low risk, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
No additional comment. Thanks.
Councillor Elwood.
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid I'm going to have to break unanimity here on this one. I'm still concerned about the application with regard to the relaxation of the 315 house limits before the Gedlin Access Road GAR comes into operation. Clearly, the risk that the GAR will overrun in its completion date is now a lot less than it was in 2016 when this application was granted. And there is a very good chance that it will be completed to schedule. However, there is still a risk that the GAR could overrun due to unforeseen circumstances. And this is a major construction project, which often these sort of projects do overrun. So the 315 house limit is provided for residents to give them a guarantee that Arnold Lane, Main Road and Shearing Hill wouldn't be overwhelmed with extra traffic before the GAR came into use. This application in itself came into the council in the summer of last year. And at the time when I looked at the application, it seemed to imply that the intention of the application was to ensure that the 315 house limit would be retained because it would allow the developer to make a start on building houses in Phase 1B of the site, which is not unreasonable. And I don't think many people would object to that. And as such, I'd like to quote from a document within the planning details for the application. And that refers to Chase Farm Gedlin Section 73 planning statement. And it says, "The planning restriction of 315 occupations within the current full planning permission for Chase Farm will remain in force, providing assurance to Gedlin Borough Council that vehicular access from the site onto Arnold Lane will be within the boundaries of the transport assessment as established at committee May 2016." So there is a definite confusion there to the intention of this application. If we go back to the original 2015 planning application for this development and look at the transport assessment, which was commissioned by the developer, it refers on a number of occasions to the ability of the Collery Access Road, as it then was, I think it's now called Walden Road, that feeds onto Arnold Lane and its ability to cope with traffic moving onto Arnold Lane. And it states that any additional capacity would have to be provided for having access via additional junctions onto the GAR if there were more than 315 houses. So clearly, that isn't going to happen if more than 315 houses are built before the GAR is open. The Highway Authority have not raised any objections to this application. And they've cited the start of construction of the GAR as their reasons for not objecting. It's disappointing that no new traffic modelling work has been published with this application to provide the committee with evidence that there would be no traffic congestion if the 315 house was breached. Finally, even if there are no serious impacts on traffic in the immediate area if the 315 house limit is breached, there is also the issue of ensuring that public transport is correctly introduced onto the housing development. I have been informed by County Council staff that there is a trigger point of 75 to 100 houses, at which point a bus service should be instigated onto the housing development. And clearly, that hasn't happened as of yet. And the risk is that if the house completions are accelerated on site, there'll be a lot more residents in situ and they'll basically just get out of the habit of using public transport. And this referred to in the report for the original application, which stated, "If public transport is not implemented during the built-out phase, it is very difficult to get residents to adjust their travel patterns." And I think this in itself is a good enough reason to limit the number of completions in the early stages of this development. So as it stands, I would be opposed to this recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Councillor Hope.
I think Councillor Elwood's got it right, actually. I looked at this and I thought, clearly the phasing was to actually limit the traffic onto the main rails around Gedlin. And there doesn't seem a good reason for this, other than somebody's trying to push ahead. I agree with him that if it's a case of getting ready to build them as soon as the GAR is finished, et cetera, then that's fine. But if you start building them and finishing them, you are literally going to create a massive traffic problem. I really can't see the advantage of that. And it's not something I think we should be supporting. The phasing was there for a reason. The reason is still there. Maybe the phasing should be as well. Thank you.
Councillor Paling.
Have you forgotten me?
Sorry. Councillor Lawrence.
Thank you.
Do apologise.
Well, I think there are three reasons for this to be approved. One is that the County Council's Highway Authority has no objection. Another is that it fits in with the national planning policy framework. And the third is economic, getting people back to work. So I should be supporting this.
Councillor Paling.
Thank you. I do agree with Councillor Lawrence. I think I would add our original concerns with the application, although I do recognise that there is some impact on local traffic, was that the houses would not sell quickly. And I'm really pleased that the first phase has gone so well. Contributions to the 106 for the GAR are going ahead. And I'm really happy that all of the extra houses will not come on substream at the same time. So it will not be quite as horrendous as you're anticipating, Andrew. Otherwise, I think Highways would have had something to say. Thank you.
Councillor Squoggie.
Nothing to add.
Councillor Wheeler.
No further comments to make. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson.
No additional comments.
Councillor Creamer.
Just to actually support it, I understand the phasing, the concerns. But in actual fact, I'd agree with Councillor Lawrence in that it will actually get people back to work. And I think with them phasing in as they are, there'd be extra impetus to make sure the bus service is actually provided. It actually gives them more of a reason to, especially at the moment when the bus services are drastically reduced. And I'm pretty sure they'll be looking for business. So yes, nothing after that.
Councillor McCrossan.
No further comments to add. Thank you.
Councillor Truscott.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Councillor Lawrence. And I think that artificially imposing this cap is simply going to slow down the progress of this development. You've got to consider, as was said, these 315 houses aren't going to appear overnight. You know, the build-out rate will take a couple of years at least, maybe three. And by that time, you know, the Gedlin Access Road and every other road around it will have been up and running for a long time. I think that any sort of delay is counterproductive. So I certainly vote in favour of this.
Would anybody like to come back?
Move with technology.
Nobody wanted to come back. Okay.
Okay, you have a recommendation on page 38 to grant removal of the planning permission. Okay, you have a recommendation on page 38 to grant removal of the planning permission.
Sorry, 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 I pressed the wrong button on my, on my, on my machine. I meant to speak and I pressed the dial-off button. So could you repeat what you said there?
Would anybody like to come back with any further questions?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I, I was too eager with my button pressing. And I, I wondered whether it would be possible to, to move an alternative recommendation for consideration.
No.
But no.
I think, you know, in view of what everybody's said, I don't think it would be a constructive proposal, recommendation.
Chair, perhaps if I could also just advise at this stage, in terms of an alternative motion, you already have one motion which is being debated and which needs to be voted on. If this motion is not carried, then of course it would be open to put forward an alternative motion. But as there is already a motion on the floor, that needs to be voted on first of all.
Thank you, Sarah. Helen and Kate, would you like to take the vote for me, please?
Yes, okay. councillor Barnes.
Four.
councillor Barnfather.
Four.
councillor David Ellis.
Four.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
councillor Elwood.
Against.
councillor Hope.
Against.
councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Sorry, councillor Lawrence, what's that?
Four.
Thank you. councillor Paling.
Four.
councillor Skoggy.
Four.
councillor Wheeler.
Four.
councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
councillor Creamer.
Four.
councillor McCrossan.
Four.
councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that was item six on the agenda. So now we come to our comfort break, which will be a five-minute break. See you back here in a minute past three, I guess that would make it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, to the second half of the meeting of Gedling Borough Council Planning Committee. And we are now on item seven on your agenda papers, which is application 2020 stroke 0235, which you'll find the application form on page 49, sorry, page 50.
Okay, Chair, we will need to just do an attendance check again, please.
Okay, sure, sure, Kate, sure.
Thank you. So councillor Truscott.
Present.
councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
councillor Barnes.
Present.
councillor Barnfather.
Present.
councillor Creamer.
Present.
councillor David Ellis.
Present.
councillor Rachel Ellis. councillor Rachel Ellis, oh, thank you.
Present.
councillor Elwood.
Present.
councillor Hope.
Present.
councillor Lawrence.
Present.
councillor McCrossan.
Present.
councillor Paling.
Present.
councillor Skoggy.
Present.
councillor Smith.
Present.
councillor Wheeler.
Present.
Thank you. So councillor Parr is, is absent.
Thank you very much. So as I was saying, item seven on the agenda is 14 Tennyson Avenue. This is only here because the applicant is related to a member of Gedling Borough Council. It is demolition of an existing building and construction of a new replacement. Hello?
Hello?
Do you want to say anything about this, Mike?
I will introduce the application, yes, chairman, thank you. So there is an extant planning permission in place for extensions and alterations to the existing bungalow, to form a two-storey dwelling. Plans submitted with the current application are identical to the approved plans. The key difference is the method of achieving the development. Extant permission proposes extensions to form two-storey dwelling, or the current application proposes to demolish the existing bungalow and rebuild a new two-storey dwelling, which as I've said, is identical to, in design, to the extant planning permission. Tennyson Avenue is extremely diverse in terms of the dwellings along the street. Number 14 is the only bungalow within the immediate surrounding area. And as such, there are no concerns regarding the increase in mass from a single story to a two-story dwelling. The actual design is considered to be visually appropriate, given the context of the surrounding area, and would not result in any undue impact on the residential amenity currently enjoyed by the occupiers of surrounding properties. Car parking and access would remain as existing. And it should be noted that Highways Authority has raised no objection to the proposals. I recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the case officer's report, chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. So there we have the proposal on page 50, demolition of existing building, construction of new replacements. Well, I would move that formally as chair. councillor Wilkinson.
Sorry, move that seconded formally.
Thank you very much. And would you like to open the debate?
councillor Barnes.
No comment, just support the application.
councillor Barnfather.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed no, no objections from residents, no objections from highways and no detrimental impact on the street scene. I'm happy with the application.
councillor David Ellis.
No comment.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
No additional comment.
councillor Elwood.
No objections to the applicant.
councillor Hope.
No comment.
councillor Lawrence.
No comment.
councillor Paling.
No comment.
councillor Skoggy.
No comment.
councillor Wheeler.
No comments to make, thank you.
councillor Wilkinson.
No additional comments.
councillor Creamer.
No comment.
councillor McCrossan.
No comment, thank you.
councillor Smith.
I'm happy with the application, no comments to add.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come back?
You haven't asked me yet.
Oh, I do apologise. Councillor Truscott.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I would have preferred the applicant to have stuck to their previous application and achieved their, their ends by simply building up from the existing bungalow. You know, obviously, you know, this is not exactly the, the greenest way of doing things. But as there are no material planning considerations, I will approve.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come back? Okay, thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Would you like to take the vote on the recommendation, which you find on page 55, which is to grant planning permission?
councillor Barnes.
Support, move it.
councillor Barnfather.
Four.
councillor David Ellis.
Four.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
councillor Elwood.
Four.
councillor Hope.
Four.
councillor Lawrence.
Four.
councillor Paling.
Four.
councillor Skoggy.
Four.
councillor Wheeler.
Four.
councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
councillor Creamer.
Four.
councillor McCrossan.
Four.
councillor Smith.
Four.
councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Now let's move on to agenda item eight, which is 14 Broadton Crescent on page 60. This once again is brought before us because the, well, the applicant is an employee of Gedling Borough Council this time. Convert integral garage into open plan lounge kitchen. Do you want to say anything about this, Mike?
I don't think I need to introduce this item, councillor Truscott.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I, in that case, as Chair, I'll move it formally.
Seconded.
Seconded formally.
Okay. Can we go through the, the list of councillors, please?
councillor Barnes.
Support.
councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you. I have a, a, a problem with this application. The original planning permission granted in 2010 was quite specific that garages shall be used solely for the benefit of the occupants of the dwelling, and so that it should be permanently retained as such thereafter. That was put in for a reason only 10 years ago. And yet here we are asking for this garage to be altered. When you go to paragraph 62 in the report, it says, well, that's okay, because the two neighbouring properties in the terraces numbers 10 and 12 have each converted their own garages to habitable accommodation. So therefore we are reintroducing the symmetry that was lost when the first two alterations were made. We, we put these conditions in originally for a reason. Garages are therefore a reason. I appreciate a lot of people using them for storage rather than actually putting their vehicles into them. But I don't know why we make these conditions if within a very short period of time we're, we're going to change them. I understand that here, this isn't the first of the three that we're making this application for, it's, it's the, the last. And I, I take the point about symmetry, but I object in principle and I will be abstaining on this application.
Very good point.
councillor Ellis. David Ellis, sorry. councillor Rachel Ellis, thank you. councillor Rachel Ellis.
No comment.
councillor Elwood.
No further comment.
councillor Hope. councillor Hope.
Not switched on, no comment.
Thank you. councillor Lawrence.
I notice that there are still two hard-standing car spaces outside the house. So I should be supporting this.
councillor Paling.
Like councillor Lawrence, I have no comments to make. I, I think the two hard-standing places will be okay. Thank you.
councillor Skoggy.
No comment.
councillor Wheeler.
No comment, thank you.
councillor Wilkinson.
No additional comments.
councillor Creamer.
No comments.
councillor McCrossan.
No comments, thank you.
councillor Smith.
Nothing to add. I agree with Meredith that it won't increase road parking, as there is sufficient hard-standing parking in front of the dwelling. So I'd be supporting.
councillor Truscott.
I agree with councillor Lawrence on, on the point of being existing hard-standing outside, but I also think that councillor Barnfather makes a very good point. You know, that why, why do we, you know, why, why do we make these rules when they're broken in, in less than 10 years? I mean, this is a very new estate there. And I think it needs looking at, the whole question. Nevertheless, I will vote in favour of this.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come back?
Chairman, I would just like to make some further comments in terms of the report and the planning history, if I may. So in 2010, the actual approval, it removed this permitted development right from all of the properties on the new housing estate. I think going forward, the approach we will take now would be to only remove, stop removing permitted development rights where there's a planning justification for doing so. In this particular instance, we have a situation whereby with the removal of the garage, there's a policy compliant number of car parking spaces. My advice to teams is that, you know, we should look at each, each of the properties on the basis of the car parking provision proposed. But ideally, what we should be doing going forward is making sure that appropriate numbers of car parking spaces are indeed provided without relying on garages.
That's fair comment.
Yeah, good point. Okay, then, we have the, we have the recommendation on page 64, which is to grant planning permission subject. Kate, would you like to run through the list for me, please?
I will. councillor Barnes.
Move.
councillor Barnfather.
Abstain.
councillor David Ellis.
Four.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
councillor Elwood.
Abstain.
councillor Hope.
Four.
councillor Lawrence.
Four.
councillor Paling.
Four.
councillor Skoggy.
Four.
councillor Wheeler.
Four.
councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
councillor Creamer.
Four.
councillor McCrossan. councillor McCrossan.
Four. Thank you.
councillor Smith.
Four.
And councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item nine on the agenda. Application 2020 stroke 0035, Hillcrest Park, Oil Crescent, Calverton. Proposal constructing an additional four light industrial units. Mike, would you like to go into this in more detail for us, please?
Thank you, chairman. The application site is situated within an employment area, and therefore the principle of employment development is fully supported. The units to be erected would largely be viewed as extensions to the existing buildings in that they would have similar eve and ridge heights. Elevation treatments and materials would also assimilate to the existing. As a result, it is considered that the design, designs of the buildings would respect the character of Hillcrest Park. Vehicular access to the park would remain as existing, and it is considered, and it is considered to be acceptable. The car parking layout will alter, and there would only be a marginal increase in spaces from 40 to 41. A car parking survey has however been undertaken on the existing site and identifies that over a two-day period, the maximum number of spaces occupied was 25, were typically between 15 and 20, 20 vehicles in situ at any one time. It should also be noted that the existing provision is in excess of the policy requirement, which is 33 spaces. I recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the report. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you. So the proposal, page 66, construction for additional industrial units, I will move formally.
Seconded formally, reserve the right to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. And Kate, would you like to open the list of speakers?
councillor Barnes.
Is this, can I just a question to Mike? Is, is there any trees to be pulled down? Any vegetation to be removed? Because there's one of trees around, I just wonder what positions with the trees?
My understanding, councillor Barnes, is that there's no vegetation of any significance to be removed. And if there were any trees of value or any, any vegetation of significance, that would have been clearly detailed in, in the officer's report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you. I think that this is employment land and that it's merely an extension effectively of the buildings that are already there. So I'm quite happy with the application.
councillor David Ellis.
No comment.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Yes, I note that this is an extension of an already light industrial site and shouldn't provide any particular difficulties, but may increase employment in the area. So I would be in favour of it.
councillor Elwood.
No comments at this stage, thank you.
councillor Hope.
I'd just like to say that anything that provides employment in Calverton is always welcome. So I support this.
councillor Lawrence.
No comment.
councillor Paling.
No further comments, thank you.
councillor Scoggy.
No comments, thank you.
councillor Wheeler.
No comments to make, thank you.
councillor Wilkinson.
No additional comments, thank you.
councillor Creamer.
Just to say in this climate, I hope it actually goes ahead.
councillor McCrossan.
No comment, thank you.
councillor Smith.
Just to say that I welcome the potential recent local employment this will bring, so I will be supporting it.
And councillor Truscott.
Yes, thank you. I agree entirely with what councillor Hope said, is anything that brings some more employment to Calverton is to be welcomed, I will support this.
Would anybody else like to come back? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you come to the recommendation on page sixty nine, grant full planning permission. Kate, would you like to take the vote for me please?
councillor Barnes.
Four.
councillor Barnfather.
Four.
councillor Ellis.
Four.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
councillor Elwood.
Four.
councillor Hope.
Four.
councillor Lawrence.
Four.
councillor Paling.
Four.
councillor Scoggy.
Four.
councillor Wheeler.
Four.
councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
councillor Creamer.
Four.
councillor McCrossan.
Four.
councillor Smith.
Four.
councillor Truscott.
Four.
Thank you, that was carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Brings us on to agenda item ten, which is Milbeck, Hapford, Deloitte Arnold's proposal for conversion to a care home. Sorry, into apartments from a care home. Mike, would you like to elaborate for me please?
Yes, thank you councillor Truscott. The application will bring back into a viable use an existing building which has been vacant at least twelve months and which falls within the urban area of Arnold. It is therefore considered that the principle of the development is acceptable. The density of the development is high, however floor plans have been provided which demonstrate that the property is suitable for conversion into twenty three residential units. Outdoor amenity space for the occupants on site will be low, however this is mitigated by the close proximity of public open space in the immediate locality. Car parking provision would fall marginally below the requirements set out in appendix D of the local planning document. The proposal is however still considered to be policy compliant, given that the development will be served by a regular bus route. In regard to the development plan policies and comments received from consultees, the development is required to provide planning obligations in relation to thirty percent on site affordable housing, bus stop infrastructure and a local labour agreement. The applicant has sought to challenge the affordable housing requirement on viability grounds and provided an assessment with the planning application. An independent assessment has however been commissioned by the Borough Council to determine whether the policy based contributions are viable and if not, the level of contributions that can be delivered whilst maintaining economic viability. The independent assessment concludes that at best, the scheme is only marginally viable even without the affordable housing contribution being applied. Development Plan Policy LPD thirty six permits a lower level of affordable housing provision, provided that there is sufficient evidence, including a viability assessment. I'm satisfied that without the affordable housing provision, the development would still be considered sustainable. The development may become viable in future years and therefore it is considered that the planning obligation should make provision to allow for review at an appropriate time. The development is however viable with a bus stop contribution at Cedar Grove and a local labour agreement. Chairman, I recommend that permission is granted in accordance with the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. So now we have it on page seventy four, proposal for planning application for conversion of a disused occupied residential care home for apartments. I will move that formally, Chair.
Formally seconded and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Kate, would you like to open the?
Yeah.
For me?
councillor Barnes.
Yes, can I support the application? I'm just disappointed that it didn't carry on as the whole folks said, because I think, I think I was a chair of the planning committee when we got this support in the past, but having said that, I think it's a wise move to do what they're doing and I support the application and I think it will be a useful addition to the area round about there, which will give some people permission to stay in the area where they can keep their families as well as women and independents. So I support the application. Thank you.
councillor Barnfather.
Yes, thank you Chair. It's always good to see empty buildings brought back into use and there is a demand for this type of accommodation, either single people or indeed as a starter home, so I support the application.
councillor David Ellis.
Thank you Chair, yes, I support the application. It is good to see this particular building being brought back into use. I am disappointed about the affordable housing problem, but as long as we keep the section one or six agreement under review, I'll be happy with that. Thank you.
councillor Elwood.
Happy to support the proposal, it looks interesting development in the state bringing it back into use.
councillor Hope.
No comment.
councillor Lawrence.
I too am disappointed about the so called viability of the site leading to no affordable housing. But then I'm, I'm not an estate agent, so I don't understand a lot of this stuff. There was a very thorough and complex addition to the agenda in terms of how this was arrived at. I don't pretend to understand it, but I'm pleased to see that it will be kept under review.
councillor Paling.
Thank you very much. As I'm sure councillor Wheeler will affirm later on, we have been really concerned about this empty building for some time. And I'm quite pleased that it is now going to come back into use. However, I am disappointed about the independent assessment with regard to viability. And I'd like to check, Mike, although we've got it under review, if they don't start the development. If the apartment sell for a higher rent or a higher rate than is in the report, and I do think that that looks incredibly low, even for the area of the Killers. Can we do anything about that? Or is it only if the circumstances change before the development is completed?
I think the review mechanism, so we need to, we need to think about how the agreement is worded to protect the position of the council. But what we need to seek to control is a situation where a development is commenced, let's just say four or five units are delivered and then the site is mothballed, you know, say for, you know, a period of five or 10 years without being completed and then viability could change significantly. But if this development is commenced and there's good progress with it in accordance with a timeframe which would need to be agreed, then I think that will be, that will be, that will be an unreasonable approach. But the approach that we're trying to advance here is similar to the approach which was approved recently at the site of the former Colton Police Station adjacent to Tesco in Colton and also the situation at the housing allocation at Bestwood, the West House Farm site. And I think that one was considered by Planning Committee about two years ago, with that consistent approach. But we need, we need to ensure that it's both in the council's favour and that it's in the developer's favour, because I think if the, if the terms of the agreement were too onerous and we could instigate an imminent review while they're making good progress on site, then that too could affect confidence in terms of lenders and it could result in a situation where the site isn't actually brought forward. So we just need to ensure that we get, we get that balance right in terms of the drafting of the legal agreement.
Thanks for that. I mean, despite those comments, I'm really pleased and hope that they do make good progress and get the site open again very soon. Thank you.
councillor Scoggy.
No comments.
councillor Wheeler.
Yeah, I've got plenty of comments to make about this one actually. I'm really, really pleased to see this comes to planning committee because this, I was really upset last year when I saw this building being boarded up. Saw it being boarded up in February last year. There was no consultation at all locally about it, the building was absolutely gobsmacked, quite frankly. Very, very quickly, that building fell into disrepair very quickly indeed and was magnet for antisocial behaviour, still is a magnet for antisocial behaviour. The amount of times I've been in those grounds and there's glass, rubbish, debris and other stuff that is unbelievable, along with all the residents have also done the same. So the sooner this building is redeveloped, the better. Councillor Pence already touched on some of the comments I would have made already around affordability and so forth, but I think the sooner this building is bought back into use, the better it will be for the local community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Wilkinson.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, overall I support the development. Like others, I'm disappointed at the lack of affordable housing. I think it's, it's never great when developers wring out their responsibilities in that regard. However, I am satisfied that that has, that has been comprehensively assessed and I welcome the safeguards in there if the, if the development isn't progressed rapidly and circumstances change in the future. So overall, I'm minded to support.
councillor Creamer.
Yeah, well, just echo what's actually, what's actually been said, it's really good to have a building back in and not being vandalised or used for other purposes. But just a, just a question, in the, in the verbal report, they mentioned about the local amenities not being that good, but that's offset by the local council amenities in place. Does that actually give the local amenities in place an extra protection if anybody wants to build, extend or do something with them?
No, 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 no.
I think.
I was asking the officers, Pete, not you.
The point that, the point that I was trying to make in the presentation when I introduced the item is that the density is high. So the bill, the actual footprint of the building, if you look at the site plan, is significant in terms of the overall site area. That's why we've got a very high density figure if we think about, you know, how maths work in that regard. But the point I was trying to make is that, you know, we're very close to the recreation ground on, I think Coffey's Road, is it called Coffey's Road Recreation Ground? But it's the one that directly adjoins Coffey's Road and there's the car park at the back, which is close to the recreation ground. Killers, I do apologise, Killers Recreation Ground. So that's a significant area of public open space and it's very well used.
Yeah, so just been, I was just being a little bit mischievous about that for future development in ten, fifteen, twenty years' time.
councillor McCrossan.
Yeah, fully, fully support the new plans, making good use of an empty property really. Thank you.
councillor Smith.
Pleased to see this application on two accounts. A, it's developing houses in the borough without concreting over green spaces and B, it's bringing in back into use, say, disused buildings. So that's why I'll be supporting the application.
councillor Truscott.
Yeah, I agree with most of the above said, I will support this.
Would anybody like to come back?
Hey, hello?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Rachel Ellis.
councillor Ellis, she'd like to come back.
Thank you. I just like to say that, obviously echo what other councillors have said, but I'm really pleased that we're getting a number of one and two bedroom apartments into the area. They're desperately needed and so I would definitely be supporting this development.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So you have the recommendation on page eighty four that the Borough Council grants planning permission. Kate, would you take the vote for me please? Kate? Am I muted for some reason?
Can you hear me? councillor Barnes.
Yes. Support.
councillor Barnfather.
Four.
councillor David Ellis.
Four.
councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
councillor Elwood.
Four.
councillor Hope.
Four.
councillor Lawrence.
Four.
councillor Paling.
Four.
councillor Scoggy.
Four.
councillor Truscott. Oh, sorry, I'll do you at the end councillor Truscott. Okay. councillor Wheeler.
Four.
councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
councillor Creamer.
Four.
councillor McCrossan.
Yeah, four, thank you.
councillor Smith.
Four.
Okay, thank you, that's carried.
Very much. Move on to agenda item eleven.
I know, I'm not finished yet. Five minutes.
Sorry. What's going on?
It's okay, you can continue, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item eleven, which is a an appeal decision. One to Mount Bestwood, proposal to construct the bungalow. We refused planning permission, lay appeal, the appeal was dismissed. So the recommendation there is simply to note the information. So I will pass on to agenda item twelve, which is delegation panel action sheet for the seventh of February, which is on page nineteen fourteenth of February, which is on page ninety three. Twenty eighth of February, which is on page ninety seven. March, page ninety nine. Thirteenth of March, page one oh one. Third of April, page one oh three. Seventeenth of April, page one oh five. Twenty fourth of April, page one oh seven. 24th of April, page 107. And that is the, all the planning delegation, oh no, we have another one here, 1st of May, page 111. And the 15th of May, page 113. And the 29th of May, page 150. Right, then item 13 is future planning applications, which is there for you all to see. Any comments or questions about the future planning applications? If not, turn to the last item on the agenda, which is, which is there any other items the chair considers urgent? I don't have any other items that I consider urgent. So I thank you all for attending this meeting and as usual, I wish you a safe journey home.
Thank you.
Supposed to be a joke, but never mind.
Thank you, chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Safe journey into the life.